Now we're good. Call to order, November fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two, meeting of the North Andover Planning Board. Pursuant to Chapter one oh seven, the Acts of two thousand and two, this meeting of the North Andover Planning Board will be conducted in person and via remote means in accordance with applicable law. Specific information on the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and/or parties with a right and requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the town's website at www.northandoverma.gov. For this meeting in person, attendance of members of the public and board members will be permitted. Members of the public who wish to watch the meeting live may do so on their televisions by tuning to Comcast Channel eight or Verizon Channel twenty-six or online at northandovercam.org. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so despite best efforts, we will post on the town and North Andover website an audio or video recording, transcript or other comprehensive record proceeding as soon as possible after the meeting. Members of the public who would like to participate in public hearings but not attend the meeting in person, please email your question or comment prior to or during the meeting to geneenright@j e n r i g h t at northandoverma.gov. A question or comment will be read during the proceeding and responded to accordingly. We are having some technological difficulties, we're just gonna do the best we can. Gene, why don't we take roll as much as we can?
Alyssa Konig, here. Sean Kevlin?
Here.
Eitan Goldberg?
I'm here.
John Simons?
Here.
Peter Boyton? I was afraid of that.
Peter, can you hear us? Okay, Peter was trying to join remotely, we're having some technical issues, so we'll count him as absent.
It doesn't seem like he can hear. Peter, can you hear us?
Okay, so we're gonna count him as absent for now, and Kelly Cormier is absent as well. But we do have a quorum, we don't have any public hearings, so we're just going to kinda push through. Peter, well, if he, hopefully he'll let us know if he can get back on and he hears us. Okay, bond release seventeen twenty-five Turnpike Street, AL Prime Energy.
Okay, so the notice of decision for this project conditioned photographic evidence, six months to a year from the time of occupancy while the foliage is down to ensure that screening is sufficient. Photos from April of two thousand twenty-two and November of two thousand twenty-two are provided in your meeting packet. An as-built plan and an engineer certification letter for the site stating that the site is in substantial compliance with the approved plan have been provided. Landscaping has been completed and the site is fully stabilized. The meeting packet includes a letter from the owners of seventeen seventeen Turnpike Street written to the town confirming their position that they prefer that the, that there not be a fence installed between their property and AL Prime gas station, understanding that this is a change from what was indicated on the approved site plan. Therefore, the fence was not installed. So seventeen seventeen Turnpike is an undeveloped lot, it's kinda triangular in shape, and it's between this parcel and the beginning of Colonial Drive.
Okay. And for those members who are not present, so this is a gas station on Turnpike Street, and they remodeled and moved where the building was and added some pumps, and there was some question about light spillage into the neighborhood and Colonial. And so we conditioned them to some screening and things like that, as well as to come back and show us proof that, that light really wasn't coming over, and it looks like, it looks like, everything looks in line with how it was supposed to be.
So they took it for various positions along Colonial Drive, looking across to this gas station, and I provided the pictures in the packet. John, you have hard copies there, if you wanna share them?
Yep, and I saw them, and we haven't had any complaints, correct?
I've not had any calls.
Okay, so I think that worked out well, and I think we got a lot of good input from community members when we were doing that hearing, and I think they worked well together to try to mitigate any issues. So, can you get a motion to release remaining bond money?
So moved.
Can we get a second?
Second.
So Sean, you have not a special permit, so you're not voting, so we'll just do the three of us. Alyssa? Oh, we can all vote, no, we can just, well, no, I guess we'll do Alyssa.
Yes.
I vote yes.
Yes.
Okay, that's approved. Okay, lot release, one seventy Salem Street, request release of Lot three, Lydia Lane, now known as Lot three A Lydia Lane, per A and R Plan dated nine twenty-six fourteen, recorded as Plan number one seven one six two.
Okay, so you may remember recently, there's a prospective buyer for this undeveloped lot, he came before you to request an insubstantial change to allow for a condition to be eliminated in a decision calling for residential sprinkles system that was approved, an insubstantial change decision was written, it's been recorded at the registry. And so now, in order to complete the transaction of the sale, a lot release is required. The subdivision was known as the Captain Nathaniel Berry Homestead, it was a division of one sixty-six Salem Street, consists of three lots, there was an existing home on Lot one, the second lot has been fully constructed, and this is the remaining undeveloped lot. In order to sell it, it needs to be released from the statutory covenant, the road has been paved in an interim as-built, showing locations of utilities, edge of pavement, stormwater features, fencing, lighting, retaining wall, et cetera, have been provided. Jack Cahill has requested that the seventy-five hundred dollar posted bond for Lot one A be transferred to this lot. Tim Willett, the DPW Operations Director, is supportive of that transfer. And so we've been holding it, the house has been fully constructed and occupied for at least a couple of years now, and so to release it from the statutory covenant, normally a bond is put up, this would shift that bond fund to this lot until an as-built is turned in.
Okay, can I get a motion to approve the Form J lot release, as well as the transfer of the surety bond from one eighty Salem Street to one seventy Salem Street?
So moved.
Can we get a second?
Second.
All in favor? Alyssa?
Yes.
I vote yes. John?
Yes.
Okay, that's approved. All right.
So next steps is I have to sign that, you guys report.
All right, I see that our public hearings are continued until December sixth. Bonnie Lane and Zero Turnpike Street, continue to December sixth?
Yes, yep.
Discussion item, seven oh on Salem Street, James Zanakis, September third, two thousand nine, approved site plan review, special permit condition, the applicant should provide the planning board with a review of litter, lighting, and traffic within one year of the project's occupancy date and photographic evidence, six months to a year from the time of occupancy while the foliage is down, should ensure that screening is sufficient.
All right, so this is a similar case, the notice of decision, conditioned operations report, it's been provided, it's in your packet, it conditioned photographs of the screening as well as litter, lighting, things like that, and so the report is written, and Jim Zanakis is here to present it.
Okay.
And I should note that the convenience store is fully occupied and has been for over a year, the restaurant, though, has not been occupied, and so you may recall, the report came about because of those several abutters in the area that participated in the hearing process, so I would just suggest that maybe a year from the restaurant opening, you may want a second update, I've kinda questioned Jim that that might be the case, but I thought it was appropriate, at least at this point, to report back.
Okay. Jim, how's it going?
Good, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Jim Zanakis, I'm one of the owners of seven oh one Salem Street Realty Trust at seven oh one Salem Street, North Andover. We began the process about three years ago, we opened in January of two thousand twenty-one. Happy to say that a lot of the things that the board was concerned about in the original site plan have been addressed, and it's been a much improved situation with traffic flow and parking on the side streets. The parking lot is now big enough with three hundred and sixty degree traffic flow all the way, all the way around the building, which has made it much easier for cars to pass on Abbott Street, a lot of the concerns that the abutters had a few years ago have been alleviated. In addition, there's been some screening put up, trees and fences along property lines and things like that, which is good, first of all, to provide screening to the neighbors as well as contain whatever trash there is on the property, which is something that we monitor every week. We send staff out once a week to go pick up trash in the area. So we did the, I don't think we've had any concerns or issues with any of our abutters, no one said anything to us over the last year and a half or so, so we take that as a win, and we're looking forward to, you know, the next couple of stages to get that property fully developed.
So for you guys who weren't on the board when this happened, so this is where Taki's and Midtown Market now is, so we did have a lot of discussions when it first came in, it was a great idea, and it's been, I think, serving the area really well, I think it's a very unique kinda place in town and serves a different function than a lot of the other places, so I think it, I think it's worked really well, and just, but there were concerns about, you know, there were a lot of landscaping vehicles that were parking and getting really in the way, and then on Abbott Street, and there were also just questions about lighting with where the cars were going in. You know, as someone who lives close to there, I think the traffic works really well, I think the lighting works well, the fencing was good, and I know we moved some of the fence at one point because of sightlines, and we, in conjunction with the police department, was saying that the fence had gone down too far, so that the sightlines turning in and out were problematic, so that's been adjusted. So I think, from what I've seen, it's worked really well, any, we haven't had any neighbor complaint since.
No, we haven't.
Yeah, so it was, I think people were a little nervous when they saw the size of the change, but I think it has worked well, but I do think it would be nice, once you kinda, you know, if the coffee shop comes back, or if a restaurant goes in, maybe a year from now, just come back and let us know how traffic is, you know, hopefully there's more traffic, right? That means business is going well, but just, if there are issues that have come up, we just wanna hear about them to address them. Is there anything else we need to do other than get the board?
No, it's not a bond release request yet, because the restaurant's not open, so I think we should continue to hold that until we move forward.
Okay, so I think that's great, keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Okay, great.
All right, so it should be noted, Peter has joined, he has audio and camera at seven twenty this evening.
Hi, Peter. All right. Okay, we are going to do MBTA Communities Update. I, for one, am fascinated.
Okay, so Andrew Shapiro's here, he's provided a similar presentation to the Select Board a few weeks ago, and he will provide the presentation, hopefully we'll get that working. So the presentation is linked to the agenda for those viewing, you can access it there, we're trying to get the screen up, the board members have a hard copy, Andrew, for your reference.
My first presentation, and just for the record, Andrew Shapiro, Director of Community and Economic Development, and a pleasure to be here to cover this topic this evening, and I don't give credit to you all very much, so this is a good opportunity to do so.
Do me a favor and speak to that mic?
This one?
Yeah.
Am I good? Can you hear me clearly?
Yeah.
Okay, great. So I don't think I ever did an initial presentation on this subject, so I apologize, because some of this, some of this information is geared towards sort of like refreshing your memory on where we are with respect to this issue, but the first slide, if you, if you open up your presentation, just covers the fact that this change in legislation came about because the governor signed a economic development bill back in two thousand twenty-one, and it included amendments that changed the process on voting for certain types of special permits, especially with respect to approving new housing, and so it changed the voting thresholds for bodies such as town meeting and city councils from a super majority to a simple majority. And so that was one change, and the other change, which is really the subject of this presentation, is the addition of an additional section called Section three A, which addresses a requirement of MBTA communities, I'll get into what that means, to have an as-of-right multifamily zoning district of quote-unquote reasonable size with a minimum density of fifteen units per acre. And so I'll obviously get into a little more about what that means into this presentation, but first, I'll just take you through a quick timeline, the next slide covers a timeline of how DHCD rolled things out after that law was signed into, was signed by Governor Baker. So in January two thousand twenty-one, DHCD, the Department of Housing and Community Development, they issued initial guidance on this in January two thousand twenty-one, and then about a year later, in December of twenty-one, they issued revised guidance, and they also kinda did the work of going out to communities, getting feedback, they received over four hundred comments, including ninety from municipalities, we were one of those municipalities, and I'll give you a little explanation of some of the issues that we commented on in a few minutes. But then they, then we held an initial briefing with the Select Board and submitted information to DHCD, which was required. We had to basically go through a process to do a public meeting with the Select Board to brief them on the subject, and then submit some initial information to DHCD just about where we stood with respect to this new legislation. That happened in April of two thousand twenty-two. And then, most recently, in August of two thousand twenty-two, DHCD issued final guidance, meaning this was their, you know, all the, the final regulations with respect to how to comply with Section three A, and so, right now, we're in this period of time where we're digesting that guidance, and we're gonna be taking the next steps. So where we stood after the draft guidance was issued, we were considered a rail community, okay? And you'll see in a moment, there's all these labels for all the MBTA communities around the, the larger Boston metropolitan area, which meant that we were required to have what was known as a district unit capacity of one thousand seven hundred eighty-seven minimum by right units, which would have equaled fifteen percent of the total housing units calculated by the U.S. Census in two thousand twenty. So what that essentially means is that we had to create, we were required to create a, a district that could accommodate the, the creation of one thousand seven hundred eighty-seven units by right of multifamily housing. Now, it doesn't mean that, and I'll explain this later again, it doesn't mean that those units actually had to be created, it just means that we have to provide zoning that can accommodate for it. And it also required that at least half the district needed to be within a half a mile of the Lawrence MBTA station. So that's, that section that's within half a mile right now is down Mass Ave, it's kind of right off four ninety-five, there's a, kind of an office building down there, I think a service station, and so what we relayed to the state was, it just really wasn't feasible for us, for there to be an expectation that we could create a zoning district that could accommodate that number of units, and they were requiring, again, that half of the, the district needed to be accommodated within that half a mile area, and we just didn't have enough land there. So we relayed that to DHCD, we explained that compliance with Section three A due to that was gonna be very complicated, and I think they-
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Just like on the page here that you did before, it talks about Section A, as-of-right, reasonable size, density of fifteen units per acre.
Yeah.
How does that morph into fifteen percent of the housing units in the town? I mean, the scale of the district unit capacity of seventeen eighty-seven seems dramatically higher than a reasonable size thing. I guess I'm just trying to figure out how you arrived at, you know, or the state arrived at seventeen one thousand seven eighty-seven.
So the number of housing units is calculated by the U.S. Census is eleven thousand nine hundred and fourteen?
And it's fifteen percent of that.
But like, where does the fifteen percent come from? Because reasonable size, is that, reasonable sizes, is that defined as fifteen percent of the total housing units in the town?
No, so reasonable size is in reference to the acreage of the proposed district, which they're proposing to be fifty acres.
This is the state?
Of developable land.
This is the state, yes. I don't, I didn't make any of the, I, I am not making any of these rules.
That's fine, I'm just trying to understand the logic of it, I mean, it is what it is.
Yeah, so, so again, the reasonable size, and I, again, this'll keep kinda repeated throughout the presentation, so I apologize for any confusion, but the reasonable size portion of this references, is in reference to the actual size landwise of the district, and it's supposed to be fifty developable acres, so fifty acres, you know, subtracting out any like wetland area or non-buildable area, and the unit capacity is the number of units that that district can accommodate. And back when the initial guidance was issued, that number for us was going to be seven eighty-seven, fifteen percent of the two thousand twenty U.S. Census housing stock number, and I will explain where we're going from there now that the new guidance has been issued.
Okay, I just didn't understand, like, where the fifteen percent came from.
Came from the state.
But is it fifteen percent for every community?
No, it's, it's, it was for every rail community, so we were considered an MBTA rail community. So they have different categories of MBTA communities.
It's gonna change, we're gonna, we're just walking you through-
No, that's fine, but this is, is this, I'm just curious, is, this isn't the legislature doing this, this is-
Yes.
The regulator, the regulator?
No, it's, it was a law that was passed, signed by the governor, and now a regulatory agency, DHCD, the Department of Housing and Community Development, is responsible for enforcing it.
Oh, so fifteen percent came from the state law?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, well, I, I don't know if it's specifically in the state law in the, in the, but in the guidance that's provided by DHCD, as a result of the law, they provided it.
I think, I think it's, I think it's, I think it's, yeah, I think the law says you have to create this community and gives DHCD the authority, delegates to them to how to create.
Yeah, I'm just trying to figure out whether it's specific.
I think DHCD is the person, is the, is the who, you would, but, but it looks like that, that was what it originally was, and now that's changed anyway.
Yeah, and we, I will certainly get to that, and I just wanna say-
Well, why don't we skip to that part?
Yeah, that's, that's more than okay, that's more than okay.
Where are we actually at?
So, the next slide-
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Sure.
So I wasn't clear on the answer to John's question, is every rail community also required to have fifteen percent of their total housing stock, or only some of the rail communities? Does that percentage vary among rail communities?
No, it's, 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 every rail community is required to have fifteen percent.
Thank you.
Yes. All right, so the next slide is just, now we're getting into the new guidance, okay? So the, the map that I show here just shows where all the, all the different designations of MBTA communities, rapid transit communities, commuter rail communities, and we are now considered an adjacent community, so we're no longer a rail community, we're an adjacent community. Obviously, we're, we're adjacent to a rail community in, in Lawrence. Adjacent community means an MBTA community that has within its boundaries less than one hundred acres of developable station area, and is not adjacent, and it's not an adjacent small town.
Okay, Andrew, just to be clear, so when, whoever falls on, whichever municipalities fall under the term adjacent community, now we'll all have the same rules, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and so now we're figuring out what we, after the feedback from the state, or to the state, we said, hey, this is too restrictive, so you and, and other, and Alyssa and other town members say, hey, this, this isn't gonna work for us, they changed it to make it less restrictive, and now we have kind of new guidance of saying what us and other adjacent communities have to do.
Correct, and I'm about to get into what being an adjacent community means.
Okay.
But I apologize, 'cause we're jogging back to some definitional stuff here, so when we talk about as-of right, and I'm just taking this directly from the guidance, 'cause I didn't want there to be any sort of misconstruing of what, what the state is telling us. So to comply with Section three A, a multifamily zoning district must allow multifamily housing as-of right, meaning that a, that the construction and occupancy of multifamily housing is allowed in that district without the need for a special permits, variance, zoning amendment, waiver, other discretionary approvals. So, you know, currently, most of our, you know, multifamily housing, it's by special permit through the site plan review process, so we really wouldn't be considered as-of-right by the state's standard and definition, it's considered more discretionary for type of approval. So most of our current zoning for multifamily housing would not most likely comply with Section three A as it stands right now.
So, again, getting back to, how many multifamily housing units do we have in town? Of that eleven thousand nine hundred?
How many of the eleven thousand nine hundred are multifamily units?
Yes.
I don't know off the top of my head.
I don't know, I wanna say fifteen percent, but I'd have to check.
Okay.
I'll go back to it.
So it's, it's probably like fifteen hundred to two thousand, yeah, okay.
But I would bear-
I, I guess what I'm trying to figure out is, how do you overlay these new numbers on top of what's already there?
Well, I mean, to kinda skip ahead, the issue's gonna be, which ones can we put, first you have to figure out where you have to put this thing, this district, and then what's already there that could count, and what isn't, you know, you know, but, I mean, you have to create, you could create, as I understand it, you can create this district in places that already have apartments, but you have this, I mean, the acreage is significant, and it has to be contiguous, and it's gonna be a stretch to find somewhere other than Royal Crest that, that would fit this.
Yeah, no, I can, I can get into more detail, and it doesn't have to be contiguous, just so you know.
Okay.
So, so, there's more detail on that, and we can get into it. But, but site plan review, or site plan approval can regulate matters such as vehicular access and circulation on-site, architectural design, this slide goes into more of that, it's just to say that site plan review, done the typical way that most communities do it, can be somewhat discretionary in nature, but the way we do it, it wouldn't, I don't think it would fall under that category, I would think it would be, we're a little more discretionary in the way we go about our process, not that there's anything wrong with that, it's just that it, for the purposes of Section three A, I don't know that we would comply.
But you could create a, yeah?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask another question when you're done.
Okay, but you could create, and you, you could create new zoning that had-
Correct.
-by right with site plan review, not as a special permit.
Exactly.
Which a lot of places have, so you, we could, I mean, it's not something that we currently have, but we could create that.
Correct, and it could be a simple-
It doesn't have to be simply as-of right, you can build this, it can be as-of right with site plan review.
Exactly.
But, but the, more of a non-discretionary, as long as you meet the certain factors and you get your permit.
So the Royal Crest zoning was written in that manner, we just called it plan review instead of site plan review? The Osgood overlay was a plan review as well, so that, it wasn't a site plan review special permit.
Okay, so there would be a way to write it with some restrictions.
Yeah.
Okay, good, good note, okay, great. Peter, yes?
Yeah, thanks, Eitan. So you have listed some of the things that site plan can regulate, is it possible or included to, on the site plan to also consider density or building height?
Yes, but we'll, we'll get into that, I mean, there's going, there's a, there's a requirement for the type of density that the district has to accommodate for, so it needs to accommodate for at least fifteen units per acre density.
Okay, thank you.
So, and, and you could regulate height, but you can't regulate height to make it impossible to achieve the fifteen percent density, so it's kind of, I mean, I know that sounds very obvious, but-
Yeah.
Okay, affordability, so this page is really just to lay out the fact that, you know, it provides a definition of affordability, and, you know, we're allowed to provide, basically, an affordability restriction like our inclusionary, recently passed inclusionary bylaw has provided for. We can, communities are allowed to require that more than ten percent of units in a project be affordable, but we can't say that more than twenty percent have to be affordable. So our fifteen percent in our inclusionary zoning bylaw does allow for that, you know, it's, it's in compliance now, but we do have to demonstrate that it's economically feasible for multifamily housing to be developed with that level of affordability being required. That's something that I'm really, we're trying to figure out, we're gonna need a little help to understand what does, how do you determine whether or not a project's economically feasible, is it just showing that a project has happened, for instance, in a, in, under our inclusionary zoning bylaw? It's gonna be interesting to see. There's an exception to the cap, to the twenty percent cap on affordable units, the new exception applies only to previously approved and adopted forty R smart growth zoning districts. A community may amend an existing forty R district to comply with the guidelines and retain an existing twenty-five percent affordable unit requirement, and so we do have an existing forty R district that has, I think it's, is it twenty-five percent or twenty percent? I'm not remembering.
It's twenty, I think.
Twenty percent.
So, and where's that?
That's in the Osgood, or Osgood Landing.
Where the Amazon facility is?
Well, it's, it's actually front-loaded toward the street, so it's like where the solar field is and where the office building is.
So there were three sub-districts, one of which was the residential component, for the most part, and that's the solar field and up.
And do those still exist with the different plans? 'Cause I know they, you know, with the subdivisions and, and it'll cross boundaries and stuff like that.
Again, we, we have to look into it to understand it better, so it originally was one hundred and sixty-eight acres-
Yeah.
...within that overlay, and now, obviously, Amazon's built up.
The forty R zoning's still there, right?
It's still there, yeah.
The zoning is still there, but-
Yeah, well, the practical use is not there, obviously, but the zoning is there.
Right, right.
But, but there's nothing in this that says you, you can't zone the district where there's existing buildings, right?
Right, absolutely.
So theoretically, you could use that, even though you realistically, at this point, couldn't actually build there. I mean, I guess you- I mean, I guess you could.
You could build, but you couldn't, yeah, you, you could build on the other pieces of the property.
Well, or you can build on a piece of land with a building on it that you could, projection of the future was going to come down, that another, you know, if the certain property owner came in and wanted to do away with an existing building and build multifamily housing instead of what's there currently.
So, I guess the question I would have is, I mean, it's, kind of jumping forward, that seems like the easiest approach, right? Is you already have this forty R, might as well just at least make this your MBTA community, then you're in compliance with the law. But I wonder if the people, you know, and, and going, your slides later on, talk about the consequences of not having one of these, right? Not getting grants and stuff like that. I do wonder, though, if you're just formally in compliance with the law, but not in actual, not in the spirit of the law, would you, would they be more likely to deny you grants, saying, yeah, you complied technically, but, I mean, the point of this was to actually make housing and you're not doing that?
Right, right, well, there'll be a process to formalize compliance, so we're going to have to submit, you know, documentation saying, this is how we want, this is how we, we're in compliance, and DHCD is going to have to certify that. So, it's kind of a binary thing, it's, we're either in compliance or not in the view of DHCD.
Right.
And we're going to submit our, you know.
But you can be in compliance legally, we have this zoning district that allows for this.
Right.
Right, and they could say, okay, you have a zoning district that allows for this, but we know that there's a giant, you know, office building there and there's no real intention to build more housing, which is what we're trying to do for this.
Sure.
So, you meet the law, but are we going to be penalized? And I don't know, that's completely speculative, but we don't know the answer to that.
And what I'm saying is, I don't think so, because if we were in compliance, even if they don't like the brand of compliance we're in, if even, if they just check a box saying, North Endover's compliant, then that's really all, in my view, that will matter. They'll look and say, okay, the next time we apply for a MassWorks grant, are they in compliance, are they not in compliance? They're in compliance, you know? So, if they had an issue with us doing it that way for some reason, if that was some reason not appropriate in their view and for compliance, then they would tell us that and not, and we would not be in compliance. So, it's, that's why I'm saying it's binary. So, just one more thing on the affordability, there was a provision in the previous iteration of the guidance that said that if you had anything more than ten percent affordable required for the multifamily, that you would not be in compliance. So, then I looked at our zoning, our inclusionary zoning bylaw, and I was like, oh, that's great, we just passed a fifteen percent requirement and we're already not going to be in compliance with that. So, this allows for some flexibility for providing affordable housing within the, the Section eight, 3A compliant zoning district. That's what this is saying. All right, so now we're getting into land area. Multifamily zoning should be a neighborhood-scale district, not a single development site on which the municipality is willing to permit a particular multifamily project. The land area for each MBTA community has been determined as follows. In rapid transit communities, commuter rail communities, and us, adjacent communities, the minimum land area of the multifamily zoning district must be fifty acres or one and a half percent of the developable land in an MBTA community, whichever's less. So, we're fifty acres, at least half of the multifamily zoning district land areas must comprise contiguous lots of land. So, at least twenty-five, twenty-five acres has to be contiguous. The rest can be non-contiguous.
Do we know how much developable land we have in the community?
Not off the top of my head. That's an analysis that would have to be done, and we need some assistance with.
You think fifty acres would be smaller?
I think fifty acres would be smaller.
Okay.
But we attempted to get to that number, we weren't able to do it.
That's hard, yeah.
Several years ago, yeah.
Okay, so fifty acres is what you're looking at, okay?
No portion of the district that's less than five contiguous acres of land will count toward the minimum size requirement. So, again, at least twenty-five acres contiguous, total we need fifty. No non-contiguous area can be less than five, in terms of the size of this area. And then the minimum multifamily unit capacity. So, the, it's, it's, it's a measure of whether a multifamily zoning district is of reasonable size, not a requirement to produce the housing units. Nothing in Section 3A or these guidelines should be interpreted as a mandate to construct a specified number of housing units, nor as a housing production target.
So, Aton, that's in response to your concern, they specifically say it's not a mandate to construct them, but it is a mandate to zone for them.
I know.
I know, I, I don't.
See, my, my, my concern is, it seems like the smart, easy way to go is to find a district, zone for it, and then, yeah, maybe in the future that one becomes, but if, if, if all the towns do that, are they going to change their guidance and say, hey, you all kind of cheated? You know, and, and again, it's, it's, this, that seems like the way to go that makes the most sense, because it allows for it in the future, you're putting it in a spot that can support it, right? And if things change, you never know, maybe things, and now you have it already set. And they, and I was looking down, it said they don't want it for one specific project, so, I mean, in some ways that makes sense. I just worry that most towns are going to just try to find that one piece of land that nobody's using or is already in such use and just overlay it and say, okay, we've, we've complied, and then five years from now, nothing gets built, and they're like, hey, we have to change this. So, that's just the worry I have.
Could be the case. So, now that we are an adjacent community, as I said before, we require, we're required to have ten percent of, of the total housing units as part of our unit capacity. So, whereas it was previously one thousand seven hundred eighty-seven or fifteen percent, now it is ten percent, one thousand one hundred ninety-one units. So, that's a fi, a difference of five hundred ninety-six units, a reduction of about thirty-three percent of what was previously required. So, again, we need to find fifty acres where we can zone by right for a unit capacity of one thousand one hundred ninety-two, no, excuse me, one thousand one hundred ninety-one new multifamily units.
So, Andrew, I got a quick question, so this, the one thousand one hundred ninety-one, I mean, that's not a static number, that's dynamic, right? So, like, in other words, as we increase, in theory, our housing units, wouldn't that number go up over time?
So, that's a good question. I don't know, I, my understanding is it's, it's a fixed number. It's based on today's number of housing units.
Well, is it based on when you enact the zoning?
It, it may be, but we're going to have to enact the zoning by the end of 2024.
So, I would assume that, that you have to have a number, and that's a really good point, but I would think that number is probably set at the time you enact the zoning.
Got it, okay.
So, at the time you enact the zoning, you have X number of units that have to allow for fifteen percent of that.
But it's a good question, it's something else we have to sort of get guidance on.
Yeah, because if it's a dynamic number, it becomes a little bit even of a harder problem, right?
Yeah, and it creates all sorts of anomalies, you could have two towns the same size, and one has more housing use than the other, and therefore they have a higher requirement than the other town.
Yeah, yeah. Well, whereas like, you know, the, the, like, more, you know, more housing stocks built over time, you know, the next census rolls around in 2030, right, and if we go up by ten percent, if it's a dynamic number, that means your minimum requirement is to go up ten percent as well, right?
Yeah, but you, but how, I don't even know how that would work, because then you, the zoning, zoning doesn't, wouldn't change. I'm not sure how that would work, I think it has to be a set number.
Yeah, I don't, I mean, my, we're working off this eleven ninety-one unit until we're told otherwise, and.
Well, I mean, the only sort of consolation in that is fifty acres, it's forty per acre, that's a thousand, so you're pretty close to what the, the minimum is anyway, so, you know, it's less of an issue, I think.
So, moving on to minimum gross density, which is defined as units per acre density measurement that includes land occupied by public rights-of-way and any recreational, civic, commercial, and other non-residential uses. So, it's, it's basically just saying that density is calculated on a units-per-acre density measurement. So, fifty, excuse me, fifteen units per acre is what we need over the fifty acres. Dimensional restrictions and parking requirements for the multifamily zoning district must, must allow for a gross density of fifteen units per acre of land. By way of example, to meet that requirement, for a forty-acre multifamily zoning district, the zoning must allow for at least fifteen multifamily units per acre, or a total of at least six hundred multifamily units. So, you know, you can't use parking, for instance, as a, you can't require that the development has so much parking so that you can't produce a building that could feasibly have, or enough units that could feasibly have fifteen units per acre. You can't use other dimensional requirements to prevent there from being fifteen units per acre in, in a multifamily zoning district that would comply with Section 3A. And you can do it by sub-districts. So, you can have a multifamily zoning districts with different density limits for each sub-district, provided that the gross density for the district as a whole meets the statutory requirement for not less than fifteen multifamily units per acre. So, you could have an area of the district that's ten units per acre density, five units per acre density, but then, of course, you're levering it out on the other end to be a higher unit density elsewhere in the district, so you get, you know, an average of fifteen units per acre total. And the units need to be suitable for families with children. So, what that means, a compliant multifamily zoning district must allow multifamily housing as of right, and that such multifamily housing shall be without age restrictions and shall be suitable for families with children. They'll be compliant as long as the zoning does not require multifamily uses to include units with age restrictions and does not limit or restrict the size of units, cap the number of bedrooms, the size of bedrooms, or the number of occupants, or impose a minimum age of occupants. So, it's trying to not box out the idea of there being units that families could occupy. Location. So, we are in the situation where we don't have acreage near or half, half a mile from the closest MBTA station, which is the Lawrence MBTA station. But we can locate our district anywhere in our boundaries. That's what the new Section 3A guidance, the type of flexibilities provided us. Before, it was requiring us to have half of our district be within half a mile of the train station, and that just wasn't feasible. So, now we have the ability to go anywhere, essentially. But to encourage transit-oriented multifamily housing, consistent with the general intent of Section 3A, MBTA communities are encouraged to consider locating the multifamily zoning in an area with reasonable access to a transit station based on existing street patterns, pedestrian connections, and bicycle lanes, or in an area that qualifies as an eligible location as defined as, defined in Section, in Chapter 40A. Near an existing downtown or village center, near a regional transit authority bus stop or line, or in a location with existing underutilized facilities that can be redeveloped into new multifamily housing. I, I think, I just have to say that I think that any area that makes sense for us to consider for this compliant zoning would meet these standards. I mean, we're going to put it on, you know, we're going to, we're going to put it on a major roadway that has access to, you know, bus lines, or maybe look at the downtown or other areas that I think can accommodate these standards. I just can't imagine that we're going to put it in some far-flung area with no access to any utilities or, you know, rapid, or mass transit.
Can you have more than one? If you, like, let's say you had something that was part downtown and part Ozgard, would that just be one district? And to separate it, or can you have separate districts?
I mean, together, they would comprise our Section 3A compliant zoning district.
Well, one has to be a minimum of twenty-five acres.
Yeah, and one would have to be a minimum.
And then you can have several other ones, as long as they're greater than five acres apiece.
But I, you know, I consider the Ozgard compliant with these standards, because it's on Route 125. Buses go through, you know, Route 125.
You know, I, I'm just thinking of a situation, again, it makes, town meeting makes us all even more difficult, just because maybe you have a couple of different places that you have in mind, but you don't want to put it all together necessarily as one thing and then have it shut down or amended if people like one place but don't like another place. So, are there ways to break it down and have it as multiple, okay, we like this one, we like this one, but we don't like this one? It's just, it's, it's a, it just gets complicated with the whole town meeting dynamic.
It does, we're, we're definitely at a disadvantage having to approve zoning through town meeting, because if you can imagine a city, for instance, they can bring a new zoning district every month to their city council, you know?
Right, you have a lot more time to talk about it and get input and, and, okay, we didn't like this, let's change it. It's just harder to make those changes the way that our system's set up, it's just harder to do.
But, but I guess the quantum of vote at town meeting for these types of changes is still a simple majority, right?
It will be, yes. Yeah, for this, for, for enacting a Section 3A compliant multifamily zoning district, it will be a fifty percent majority vote, fifty-one percent. So, timeline, when do we have to comply? So, we're an adjacent community, we have to submit an action plan by the end of January of this upcoming year, so literally in two months here. And when I say action plan, it's, that's a really, really loose word for that, because it's basically a form that we fill out that explains, you know.
Here's what we're looking at.
What have we done so far, have we talked to the planning board about this, the, you know, the select board? Do we have any compliant zoning districts that comply with 3A? You know, what are we looking at as far as other potential zoning areas? So, and then what's kind of a timeline for how we want to comply with this? And we only have really one choice, it's kind, we have to go through a process where we figure this out in the next, basically, year, and then go to annual town meeting in 2024, or maybe a special town meeting in 2024 to determine this.
But if we already, but, if you think, do you think the Ozgard already would work?
A section of it would, yes.
Okay, so would there be?
But, but it wouldn't, it, it wouldn't be enough acreage to comply, to provide the full fifty acres.
So, we need somewhere else as well?
Correct, and it could, so I'll get into a little bit of that in a minute, if you want. But yes, the Ozgard is definitely a piece of the puzzle, the puzzle of mine.
Okay, but no, that was, that, that was my question, if it was the whole thing, then you just designate that, and then you find other stuff, great.
Never that simply.
No, that's, okay, I did.
But a, as you can see here, we do have to comply by the end of 2024, hence, you know, 2024 annual town meeting, a special town meeting, if it's necessary, whatever, what have you, is going to be our, our timeline.
Okay.
So, as I mentioned before, we have to submit an action plan. It provides information about current zoning, past planning for multifamily housing, potential locations. And it also requires the MBTA community to establish a timeline, as I mentioned before, so I just kind of ran through that again. So, then DHCD will approve the action plan for consistency with the guidelines. They'll determine that the MBT community's action plan is reasonable and will lead to district compliance in a timely manner, and they will issue a determination of interim compliance. So, we want that determination of interim compliance, because that makes us eligible for grants in 2023. And then we got to implement the action plan, which basically means that we need to figure out what we're going to do. We got to follow that plan, we have to go through, you know, how we're going to comply. We're going to have to, you know, talk about the Ozgard, talk about other potential zoning districts that could comprise the total Section 3A compliant multifamily zoning district. And this, the next slide just talks about Massachusetts Housing Partnership is providing technical assistance. We applied for this, haven't heard back, not really sure what's going on there, but I will say that we have a meeting tomorrow with Merrimack Valley Planning Commission. And I believe the Merrimack Valley Planning Commission is one of the designated technical assistance providers that MHP is working with. So, if we had gotten this grant, or this technical assistance award, what have you, they might have just assigned us to MBPC anyway, so we're just being proactive and meeting with MBPC now to have these discussions ahead of time, so we can start discussing how we can be in compliance. So, just, you know, getting back to your questions and some of the discussion we've already had about how do we comply, how are we going to do it? So, this is a map of the existing Ozgard forty R district. So, the area that's shaded in different colors, you see a residential zone, a mixed-use zone, a business opportunity zone. Those areas are, they comprise in total the, the Ozgard. The area that currently complies, in my view, with Section 3A is the residential zone, which is at the top, the closest area to Bradford Street, which is mostly right now, mostly covered with a solar installation at this point. And it allows, so it allows multifamily by right. I did a really rough calculation over GIS, it looks to be about twenty-six acres. I don't want, you know, no one quote me on that, because it really has to be looked at a little more closely. And then I don't know if there's areas on this, on the land that are not developable, like wet or just not feasible for development. You'd have to subtract that out of the acreage.
I think there are.
But, so let's just be conservative, and I, I think there's at least twenty acres there, I'd have to think, you know?
I don't know, a lot of that's wet.
A lot of it's wet, okay. Fifteen acres?
And the sewer pumps, the sewer pump station is also a leased area within that footprint, too.
But, let, let me put it this way, there's going to be more than five acres, we need at least five acres to make one portion of the. We need at least five acres to make one portion of the, you know, of a compliant area. And then, you know, do we look at the rest of the, some of the other areas of the 40R? I mean, a lot of that's already, I have to make a determination as to how much of that is now occupied by Amazon, but certainly the, the, the property owned by Ozzie Properties, that's the office building right now, you know, it could be feasible for multifamily development. And, and you could, you could zone for that. And again, it could, they could still go on and always use it as a commercial site, as long as it's also allows for the potential for it to be redeveloped as housing sometime in the future through this zoning. And again, it could never be, it might never be built, but we comply, because we have it zoned that way.
But we have to be prepared for the possibility that it actually could. So if you make that by right?
Yep.
And then you have, that's now a big housing, that might be good, but you can't take for granted that it would never happen, even though it doesn't look likely today. If they look at and say it's more economical to tear down this building and not have the driving school there, and put up, you know, a hundred units, might be a great place for it, I don't know, but, and we'd have to think about, like Peter's point earlier, about what kind of site plan we could put in, but if it's by right, it's gonna get built, so you have to at least, I wouldn't take, I wouldn't, if I'm naming someplace, one of this, as part of this, I, I have to expect that at some point there, it's gotta be multifamily, you have to be okay with that.
Yep. But just running through a couple of the other things here. So it does, currently, the residential area does allow for twenty dwelling units per acre, which is above the fifteen percent, or excuse me, the fifteen unit per acre requirement for Section 3A. And there's a twenty percent affordability requirement. So we would then be required to demonstrate economic feasibility. I can't see that being a problem, but we have to get more information from the state on what constitutes economic feasibility. And then, you know, this is just to say that, you know, if we're looking at other areas, you know, we have to, again, I'm not, I'm not a proponent of any of these ideas, I'm just throwing it out there for discussion, or for, you know, what we have to think about going forward. Downtown, as well as the, you know, Davis and Ferber Mills area, it's already zoned for housing. You know, do we look at allowing for having by right housing zoned in this area at fifteen units per acre? And same with Royal Crest. You know, we've already gone through that discussion for the past two years, but is there a version of zoning Royal Crest that can comply with Section 3A that people could be on board with? So it's just food for thought. Those are two, two areas of town that can accommodate housing and have large areas of land, so that could add to the acreage that we could use in the Ozgod.
How would that differ from the zoning that Royal Crest has now?
I don't.
It's by right, other than special permit, but.
Yeah, that's it. So it, so right now, if you were to do new multifamily zoning, and correct me if I'm wrong on any of this, Gene, it would require a site plan review, but then there's a clause in the bylaw that states all site plan review is done by special permit. So that's kind of the kicker. If you take that out, I don't think you'd have a problem, to be honest with you, as long as it met, as long as you can do fifteen units per acre. I'm not sure that Royal Crest is currently zoned for fifteen units per acre.
So we don't zone that way today, but it's handcuffed in that it can't be more than two or three stories, there can't be more than X amount of buildings. There's all kinds of things that control density, like block coverage and building heights and things like that.
Yeah, no, no, I get that. I'm just wondering if, if you put these numbers into the Royal Crest, how much different would it actually be from what's there now? Like, if you?
Well, it's seventy.
It would be more.
Right, but, right, but how much more?
Yeah.
So it's seventy, it's seventy-six acres now with five hundred and eighty-eight units.
Yeah.
So.
So it's, hold on, let's do some math. So it's seventy-six acres?
Yeah.
Five hundred and eighty-six.
And some of it is wet, by the way, so it's not, it's gonna be probably a little less.
It's like thirteen percent.
Thirteen units per acre?
Yeah, I think so, I think so. Did I do that wrong?
Fifty, seventy-six.
Yeah. Five eighty-eight, oh, no, seven, sorry, I did the wrong one, seven.
Yeah, so it would have to be double, effectively double the density.
Okay, that's what I was curious about.
So. And then the next slide just talks about if we don't comply, what happens, and, and just in, in broad strokes, we're just knowledgeable for grants. But, you know, DHCD has indicated that communities must comply, they're basically, it's not really a choice, they're not giving us a choice, and that other grant opportunities might be at risk. And just to give folks a sense, you know, over the last few years, we've received approximately five million dollars in MassWorks grants and a hundred and forty-one thousand dollars in the Housing Choice funding, so it's not insignificant.
MassWorks, what is it?
MassWorks is the state's infrastructure grant program, so when we were installing sewer and the sewer pump station along Route 125, that was funded with a MassWorks grant.
Okay.
And then we had another MassWorks grant prior to that, I believe, to do streetscape improvements on 125 adjacent to the Signature Commons, Princeton Properties project.
Yeah, okay.
So typically, those, those grants are awarded alongside economic development projects. If you're doing a multifamily housing development, or a new job-creating project, like the Amazon project, they'll, they'll award a grant if you, if you, if you apply for it. And then the Housing Choice, we use that to, we're, we have a consultant on board to look at downtown zoning, and she has been funded with a Housing Choice grant of about seventy-five thousand dollars. And we have another grant that we just got through Housing Choice that's going to be used to hire another consultant to look at how we reuse the soon-to-be former senior center building. So.
So Andrew, just, just going back to the original, what, is there affordable, other than our, our own inclusionary zoning, is there an affordable requirement for this?
There's no requirement, no.
Okay.
There's accommodations for, if we want to have an affordable requirement.
But our inclusionary zoning law would apply.
It would apply, we would have to demonstrate economic feasibility, meaning we would have to show that you could build fifteen units per acre while require, that it's feasible, economically speaking, to have a developer build fifteen units per acre's worth of this amount of housing while requiring, with the requirement that they have to have fifteen, fifteen percent of those units be affordable.
And when do you have to prove?
In other words, they don't, what they're trying to prevent from happening is there, like, to be like a, a backdoor way of stopping development, saying that your, your, your affordable housing requirement is so high that no developer is gonna feasibly do this.
That's interesting, though, because again, that's a, that's not a static thing either, right? Whether something is, is economically feasible now, might not be economically feasible now, regardless of whether you're making them affordable or not, or in two years, it might be.
And I'd like to think that our bylaw is feasible, because, well, A.
Well, it has bonuses and has other things.
That, and, and we got feedback from, you know, various parties, including developers, on, does this make sense? Is this completely, you know, is this, would this completely turn you off from any ability to develop housing?
Okay.
So, yeah, so the, we, we are required to do this, and noncompliance could result in, in financial penalties for the town. So again, moving forward, we're gonna work with Mass Housing Partnership, or MBPC, and others to, to get our hands around a compliance strategy. We'll definitely engage stakeholders, are engaging you right now, and we'll certainly continue to engage you. Town staff, obviously, myself and Gene are very involved, and, and the general public as, as it, as we have more plans that we can reveal. We'll have to submit an action plan by the end of January, which we will do. We'll request a determination of district compliance by late 2023, that's our plan at this point. So in a run-up to town meeting in 2024, we need to make sure that the zone that we would be presenting to the public could be compliant. We don't wanna find out after going to town meeting that we have a non, a, a district that the DHCD would find to be noncompliant, hence, we would be seeking determination from DHCD on compliance by late 2023. And then we would have to have it approved thereafter, if it was, if DHCD did deem it compliant by, like, mid-2024.
And maybe, we, maybe went over this, Gene, or, is this, so this has to be formal zoning, right? Can it be an overlay district?
Yes.
Yes.
Like, it, it is in the case of the Ozgod, for instance. The Ozgod is an overlay.
No, I understand that, but is it something where, so you're creating a zoning district that's called the MBTA Community District?
Multifamily.
Multi, or multifamily zoning district? That can be it, so that, could that be like an overlay on the Mills, which has its own plans, which then gets, it's all weird, because can you go under the plan development or under the overlay or something like that? So theoretically, it could be something like that.
Yeah, I mean, I'd have to take a look at the, we'd have to do a calculation on how many units can be built under, for instance, the current downtown zoning. I mean, we're, we're working on downtown zoning right now.
Right.
So it's, it's kind of a moot point, because I think whatever we do to revise our current downtown zoning, we want to integrate Section 3A compliance with it, most likely. I mean, I think that would be the prudent thing to do, in my view.
Okay. And that makes sense.
I mean, when you think of downtown, too, I mean, not to get, you know, this is something we have to tease out through a public process, but, you know, downtown's a denser area, it can accommodate housing, it has other services, it has access to, you know, we're close to 495, it has access, it's closer to the Lawrence MBTA station. I mean, it, to your earlier point, Aton, it's, you know, it, it, I think follows along the spirit of what the legislation tries to capture, or the guidance tries to capture.
Yeah, I think, I, I just think you, it's, I don't envy the task of putting that together, because you'd have to just be very specific with your sub-districts and your setbacks and different height restrictions in different locations and things like that, right? Because we do have a mix already, which is great, but like, so if you're in the area with Avalon, you can have more density by right, you know, and those parkin' logically, if you get right to, you know, on Main Street, maybe you have different setbacks and height requirements and, and density restrictions, which you can have, as long as the whole thing equals out, so.
Right.
It's not easy, okay.
So that's all I have. I'm sorry for the dense nature of the subject and the fact that it's, you know, kind of being thrust upon us at this point, all the communities around the Commonwealth are dealing with it. Some are more happy about it than others. And, you know, I, I think the good news is, I think we have something to go off of with the Ozgod as a start, the, the 40-yard zoning district over at Ozgod Landing, and I think, you know, we've got opportunities to consider further areas of compliance, like downtown and elsewhere, so.
I have a question, just going off the point Aton made earlier about town meeting. If we go forward taking this to town meeting or a special town meeting, and for some reason it gets turned down, is there any provision for an extension to revamp and resubmit?
Yeah, good question. I mean, as of right now, like, they haven't, DHCD has not expressed that, but I, I have a feeling that's gonna happen elsewhere. I have a feeling that there's going to be some towns that just feel like they need more time. So I think we have to operate on the assumption right now that it's a hard stop, end of 2024, but that, you know, if we make a good faith effort, that we'll have good, we'll have good grounds to be able to appeal and say, look, we need a little more time to comply. Or they'll just say, you know, the, the other, you know, the other option is they'll just say, you know, tough it out, you're, you're not gonna be able to get any grants in 2025 until you are in compliance, and let's see what happens, you know? So we'll have to forego any grants, and maybe that's, you know, maybe that's what, what we'll have to do, I don't know.
See, that's, it's just hard that you, for us, you pretty much have one shot.
Yeah, I mean, unless you wanna call, you can call special town meetings, of course. I mean, it's, it's kind of, it's a, it's a procedure, and it's hard.
Especially it's hard for, I mean, I don't, I don't know, we don't know if this will be contentious or not contentious, depends on how we, it all gets kind of laid out, but it's hard to call.
I think the thing to, to make abundantly clear, I think, I think you all know this, but for anybody who might be looking at this presentation at home, I mean, this is something that's being mandated to us by the state. So we're not, I'm not, you know, the planning department's not requesting this, community development's not requesting this, town manager's not requesting this, it's just, we need to comply. So it's our, it's our job to guide us in the process of compliance.
Okay.
Aton, I've got a question.
Yeah?
Yeah, just going back to Slide 3, the timeline. Was the planning board briefed back in the April timeframe before the information was sent off to DHCD?
Yeah, that's the, that's the thing, Peter. I, I don't think that you were, to be honest with you. I know we did, we briefed the, the select board, I know that.
Right.
But just to be clear about what was submitted to DHCD, it was really, you know, all geared around the, the difficulty in complying, just making the case that, you know, we had very little land, I think it was like, that area that's off of Mass Ave that goes across, that's, you know, over 495, it's like, no more than like eleven acres over there. And to ask us to comply by having half of a fifty-acre area at least be our zone, it's just, it didn't make any sense. So we conveyed that, you know?
Is it possible to share with the planning board the information that was submitted to DHCD back in April, just so we have that sort of piece of the, of the story?
Yeah, I'd be happy to do that. I'll, you know, what I'll do is I'll share it with Gene, and I'm sure she can share it out to the, the entire board.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, thanks a lot.
Yeah.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but that was the requirement, to brief the select board and submit that to?
That's right. There was a, there was a period, so there was another step toward, so we are, we are in interim compliance right now, technically. Obviously, we don't have a compliant zoning district, but we're in compliance with what the state's asking us to do, because we did brief the select board, which was the requirement. And the, the submitting comments was optional, but we felt compelled to do it because of the nature of what was being requested.
Great, thank you, Andrew.
All right, thank you all, appreciate it.
Okay, a couple, a couple of quick items. Select Board FY24 goal, explore accessory dwelling unit feasibility, master plan goals. As I understand that this is kind of twofold, so one, as part of the Master Plan Implementation Committee, it came up that one of the master plan goals was to explore accessory dwelling units, and I believe the select board comes up with goals every year, and they named it as one of their goals was to explore this. So it kind of came to us to talk about how we're gonna go about that. So a couple of years ago, we did kind of bring up an accessory dwelling unit, we talked about it, the board didn't really feel the time was kind of right for it, but it seems like there are kind of more of a groundswell to kind of look into this. When we talked about it at the Master Plan Implementation Committee, one of the things we discussed was that there are a lot of different moving pieces with accessory dwelling units, and a lot of concerns and fears about how things look, and how neighborhoods change, and how it's regulated, and, and there are a lot of, you know, and a lot of towns have had a lot of difficulty passing these kind of bylaws or ordinances because of that. So we talked about maybe putting together a working group to try to come up with and hear from stakeholders and community members about what the concerns are, and maybe try to address those preemptively, rather than just coming up with, here's an accessory dwelling unit bylaw, and then having people come in and say what they don't like about it. Maybe we look first at, maybe what are people concerned about, and then how can we draft a bylaw that has those things in mind? So if there's a real big concern about detached dwellings, maybe we don't do detached dwellings, maybe we do something smaller, or something just more incremental to change from our family suite provision, which just doesn't really work, but how can we kind of make consensus of some things that we can get done, even if we can't get kind of all different, a whole new bylaw? Maybe we can, maybe we can get incremental change that will help. So that was our thought, so I just wanted to guess, hear planning members' thoughts, and then maybe if anyone's interested in serving on that working group, or has someone in mind that they might be, that might be interested in. Again, I think we'd really like to hear, not, I mean, obviously, you wanna hear from people who are associated with housing, the housing trust, someone maybe having to do with elderly housing, because one of the benefits is, you know, older people staying in their homes, things like that, finding more affordable, but also people that have concerns about how this might impact neighborhoods or real estate prices. I'd like to get some of those kind of diverse viewpoints to see where the consensus is, and kind of start from there. So I don't know if people have thoughts, or if wanna just maybe email me suggestions or names of people, or if they wanna be interested, that's kind of what I was thinking of, how to approach it. I think if it just comes from... I think if it just comes from the planning board, or just comes from the select board as a, this is what we're doing, it's not going to be received very well.
I mean, there is sort of a lot of history there because in the past, some of the things that aren't the same as accessory dwelling, but have a sort of similar way to increase density on a small scale, have been absolute disasters and it's, you know, game neighborhoods. Frankly, people took advantage of it. You know, you, you see it with like, some of the newer duplexes that were built that were just out of scale with the, the neighborhood. And there was another, I can never back, they, you know, claimed that there were two separate entryways, but it was clearly, you know, it, people, that's the problem. It sits in people's minds that that's the case and that's a problem. And so that's why I think your approach you're taking makes a lot of sense, because you want to get that out on the table. And you, I know we, we ended up, I think, when the duplexes, having to change the bylaw, and we really spent a lot of time crafting it because of the problems that, that existed, so.
Yeah, and this is in May of 2023. It, it can be an entire year to vet it and get a lot more public input than I think we had the last time.
Yeah, I think the things we want to think about are, yeah, so, you know, size and scope, definitely. How things look, entrance ways and, and things like that. But also like, you know, our, our current family unit has to be a relative. Is that something we want to keep or get rid of? And then what happens when that relative leaves or passes away? Or, you know, how do we change those over? It's very restrictive. And we want to talk about whether that's, we want to keep it that way. We want to make it less restrictive. But how, you know, you know, I think there's a lot of consensus that people don't want just everyone using, you know, making a, an extra unit and then making it a short-term rental. So how do we, you know, legislate and, and prevent that? I think, I think figuring out what all the, the concerns are and then how we can deal with those would be a really good way to kind of go about this bylaw and then find all the things that, that people do like and kind of put those in.
Yeah. I think, I think the biggest question is really whether or not we want to guide on attached or detached, right? Because I think that's like a, a pretty big material item with respect to the accessory dwelling units, whether or not they're attached and detached, especially on how they reflect on the neighborhood, but.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I know, yeah, so it would be good, so I think if we had a working group, we could get examples, like we, I think we got before some examples of detached versus. And, and maybe it's, and it's one of those that we like consistency across town, but maybe there are places where different things are appropriate, right? Based on what the setbacks are, you know, in a particular neighborhood, maybe certain things are, are appropriate and certain things aren't appropriate. So it might have to be kind of case by case in terms of how we set it up. It doesn't have to be uniform necessarily around town, which is harder, just takes more work. So, okay, so what I think, I'd just say, if anyone's interested in being part of the working group, send me or Gene an email to say that you're interested. If you can think of somebody that might be interested, again, do the same. That way, and, and, and that way we can kind of start putting that together. And then, again, yeah, the plan would be to, you know, take some time to do this, start getting things together, start getting some consensus, and then not bring it back to this board or the select board until we really have some good consensus items about what's liked and what's not liked. Okay? Okay, discussion related to a butter notification requirement. I'm a table that I'd like, I know Kelly had some thoughts. I'd like everyone to be here for that so we can discuss that further. So let's put that on for the next meeting, okay?
Okay.
But I'd like everyone to be here for that. Meeting minutes approval, November 1st, 2022. Meeting minutes, can we get a motion?
Shall move.
Motion made. Can we get a second?
Sure.
All, all in favor? Peter?
Peter?
I.
Alyssa?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay. Anything before, else before we adjourn? Okay, have, when's our next meeting?
December 6.
December 6. Have a great Thanksgiving, everyone. Can we get a motion to adjourn?
So vote.
Move?
Second.
Second. All in favor, Peter?
I.
Alyssa?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Oh, yes. All right. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Cam. Thank you, Andrew.
Thank you, Andrew. Yeah.